All right, we have six thirty. We'll call the meeting to order, please. We can start with the pledge of allegiance. All right, do we have any additions to the agenda tonight? Hearing none, I'll look for motion to approve the agenda as presented. We have a motion, do we have a second?
Second.
Do we have a motion, a second? All of our say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed. Motion carries five zero. I'll look around for public comments. If there's anyone who would like to discuss anything that is not on the agenda, please come forward. Seeing none, we'll close public comments and move to the consent agenda. Is there anything on the consent agenda to hold for further discussion? Hearing none, I'll look for motion to approve the consent agenda as presented.
I'll make that motion.
We have a motion, wait a second. Second. We have a motion, a second? All of our say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed. Motion carries five zero. I'll take this to six eight one, Carver County Library.
Hey, Mayor and Council, we do have Heidi with Carver County Library here today to kind of just give us an annual update on the library and their presence in the community and other programs they're doing right now. Heidi?
Perfect, welcome.
I'm going to start out with a story. And it's about a little girl from Brooklyn who lives with her mother. Her mother died many years before. Her mother held down three jobs in order to pay the rent, to put food on the table, to keep at their home. And this little girl went to the library every day. They were about a subway stop away from the library. Only a subway stop, but she rarely ever, ever paid for the subway because they had so little money. And so she would walk, even in lumpy conditions in the winter, to the library. Because there she felt safe, there she felt she was surrounded by knowledge, she felt she was surrounded by people who cared about her. She felt empowered, that she could become anything she wanted. And even today, that little girl, now she just has a degree in justice, so you know my ear, still comes to that library and tells children that she reads stories to, that they can become anything they want to be, as long as they're free. Libraries from the very beginning of the US were built to be equalized. Benjamin Franklin actually created the first public library, and he was a tradesman. And he decided that all these people that had come over on the Mayflower, all the people that had money, he was just as good as they were. And as long as he kept reading and tech knowledge, so it was, he decided to create the first public library so that others could feel safe. And we built the same in Carver County. And you have access to as many books as any one of our libraries. When you walk into any one of our libraries, what you see is not what you get. If you go into libraries on the east coast and even on the west coast, what you see is only what you get. When you walk into our libraries, what you see is just the beginning of what you get, including your locker, you have your express library here. Because we share materials one with another, and we not only, among the whole service libraries, not only that, we share materials. If you go to the next slide. Not only that, in the next, we share materials across our metro area, so with over a hundred locations of materials. And if you go to the next slide, and beyond that, with over three hundred throughout the state of Minnesota. So you have access to the entire state. If you want something, like one gentleman did from Ely, Minnesota, he had it sent down, and he came back and asked us how much it would cost, and now he mailed it back. And it cost exactly zero for that individual, because this is your tax dollar. And that's what we want to provide for you. And we do more than provide those kinds of things. This last year, some of our highlights are outreach to the public. Thousand Books Report kindergarten is a program in which children and their parents can sign up, or their parents sign up to read stories, and reach their child every day. And you can easily get to a thousand books well before you reach kindergarten. And those books will give those children the vocabulary they need to get a great start in life, where you can start reading. We also have the Memory Maker Kits for those caregivers of people with dementia and other, alongside with other types of memory loss illness. And these kits contain things that spark memories in them, and whether it's books, whether it's slides, all kinds of reality that's in them. And in fact, we were actually honored for our Memory Maker Kits this last week by Nancy Pearl. I don't know if you know Nancy Pearl, she's got little action figures in the library, action figures books. But she tweeted, tweeted out a tweet to us because of our Memory Kits. We've got expansions to serve seniors, and we're going to be doing even more of that. Expansion of collaborative projects with the Parks Department. You've probably heard of the Coney Island big project that they're doing on Coney Island, and they actually do programs with the library. We've had wonderful collaborations with them in the summer for kids. The kids go to the library, but they also go to the historical society, and then they go to the Parks Department so that they can get a very well-rounded education during the summer. And expansion toward schools, including a virtual library card that you'll hear more about the next time I come around, because we'll have some actual things that are going on. Can you move to the next slide? We also get a lot of workspace, because we try to keep our libraries up. Our Chan Houston Library porch, our Chan Houston Library AV upgrade in the water room. And of course, we added new shell units to water tubs. I do have to say that here, we have problems with our water unit. We weren't able to get them equipped for a while, and so we sent our library assistant administrator out to fix it. And we had, he told me, he said, "You're not taking our lockers away from us, are you?" And he said, "No, I'm not, I'm fixing them," and she just gave him a break big time. He has fond, he just came to us this last year, he has fond memories of theirs. So probably he bobs around a lot. And then our programming, Carver County cares, again, additional, once we started with Memory Maker Kits, the public came in and wanted to do programs for the dementia and their mental, not mental, their memory illnesses. Our STEM programs, science, technology, engineering, and math with our kids. We actually expanded it to our preschools. And we were given a national award, National Association of Communities Award, for our work with preschools, STEM programs, so it's here, so we're very proud of that. Poetry and arts initiative, communications, expansion, programming, services, and much more. Well, notice that circulation, there's a big circulation there. There, and you have ten lockers, there's twenty lockers in each of the other places. Now, we would love to give you twenty lockers, but as you can see later, it's just very limited in the room. But it's fantastic, the circulation that's happening. And remember that your lockers were down for a little while this last year. That's a lock that is big one. And you'll notice you've been over to twenty twelve. So what's next for Express Library? We're not sure, but we know that our public loves our Express Library. Our Chad's library is working on their plan for their new library. It's a twenty year old Express Library, because people love the Express Library everywhere we go. Every one of our Express Libraries wants one of them, Express Library in there. Now, how many of you are bottom line people? So we have the annual group survey. How many people have something you like circulation, on the book, for example, familiar? How many people walk into the library, library visitors, four hundred eighty-two thousand plus? But you have to remember that not all of the people walk into our libraries, but they click into our libraries, our website pages. So one hundred eighty-seven thousand and over six hundred. So, and those are what we call our jam pages. Those who never, ever come into the library, they get their books, their ebooks, their e-audios, e-magazines through us, so they pay nothing for that, that's a gift of service because of your tax dollars. And you can see all the wonderful statistics all the way down. But statistics don't tell the whole story. If you look inside, there's information about some of the programs and services we have. But even more important are the wonderful smiles on people's faces from babies all the way through people well past fifty. And if you look around, you'll see many people that you might know yourself. And that's what we work for. We work for making lives better in our communities, and making people have the power to become whatever they want, whatever they want.
A question on the Express Libraries that you're talking in, our circulation of twenty seven ninety-five. Are we at maximum capacity with the ten out there? I mean, is there a reason to look at it because they're trying to get more? I mean, I understand out there it's tight, but is there an option maybe to put ten inside? And if you want to pick up during, you know, day hours, they could still come inside and get them more? Do you need more locker, I mean, are you at maximum?
Well, we turned it out as one day a week service, and two days a week. We are considering three days a week, we turn over, and it gives you a little bit of time to get your materials. But, you know, we know about a guy from Chan Houston who works a couple jobs for Wesley, and he goes up to take college for his evening job. So when he comes home, he swims over, it's definitely a clockless, you know, eight, that's eight o'clock. That's what it's set at in the morning appointment. So he has two books delivered to Chan Houston, to the mayor's Express Library. So if he's coming over here, it's probably a lot to do. But I don't know, I can't tell you if that would make it more or not. I would say that is likely.
And I understand leaving the ten where they're at, for the evening, and then having ten inside. You know, there are.
There's one that has twenty-four seven service right now.
Oh, we are?
Yeah.
Good. All right. Good.
Any other questions?
Well, thank you.
Thank you.
That's great, that's great. Thank you for coming in, I appreciate it. All right, Maggie, let's, six eight two, please.
All right, Mayor and Council, on the agenda tonight is solar garden programs. We've been kind of talking about this over the last few months at the council, regular sessions and workshop sessions. Little history, the April twenty-second, city council meeting, Novell Energy did a presentation on the value of solar program. I did include both presentations from Novell and Renesola in this packet. At the May thirteenth, city council meeting, the city council discussed the Novell Energy proposal, and was notified that Renesola was interested in presenting a proposal as well. And so at the May twenty-eighth, Renesola presented information on an AAR, which is an applicable retail rate program at either a flat rate subscription or a guaranteed savings subscription program. And so at the end of that, council directed staff to put together a memo for tonight's meeting highlighting both programs. So for all those who don't know too much about the history about solar gardens, in two thousand thirteen, Minnesota legislation directed Excel Energy to create a program with community solar gardens. Let me get this, so the community solar gardens is kind of like a neighborhood scale solar energy system. They don't create their own solar gardens, but they have relied on, and I know there are two representatives in the audience today, so if I get this wrong, let me know. But they're kind of teaming up with company, or private companies, who are building those solar gardens to then tap into their system and provide neighborhood scale solar energy to local communities. And with that, customers like cities and school districts and other larger organizations are able to subscribe into those gardens and reserve a share of that section of those gardens. The programs are regulated by the Minnesota Public Utility Commission. The original goal was to give people who don't want to install, or can't because there's local ordinances, install solar on their own property to participate in solar energy. And so state lawmakers wanted to make it attractive to promote solar development and to also stimulate the economy by creating new jobs. So to date, solar gardens have been most often constructed and owned by third-party developers rather than Excel Energy. And then they allow businesses and communities to tap in through subscriptions to get access to those solar gardens. So move on. So some of the goals that Excel Energy is working towards is they're hoping to go carbon-free with solar and wind by 2050. So they have their own goals in place, and they're kind of help promoting other communities to take on renewable energy as a source as well. In Minnesota, there are three primary ways to get solar, and that's by installing your own or tapping into a solar garden. And a little bit more about subscribing to a solar garden. So if the city or a company does subscribe to a solar garden, then you see that, see, what you do is you subscribe to a section of the solar garden based on the usage. The city right now would essentially take up a section of the garden and would then, based on the production from that section of the garden, would see credits on their utility, on the utility bills. So at this time, we have had two companies come forward and present programs to us. Novell Energy is the value of solar program. It is a guaranteed savings program in which the city would be subscribing to a rate that would always be one cent below the value of solar bill credit rate. There's, we have talked about this at other meetings, there's zero risk upfront, no cost upfront, and we'd always be like getting that one cent per kilowatt hour savings. So Solar Garden is located in Lester Prairie, which is in McLeod County. And based on discussions, we do know that it would be a twenty-five year, we do know the twenty-five year timeline because that is already predetermined, and so we would know from year to year what we would be getting. And I can go to that. So there is a schedule already in place. So the bill credit rate is already predetermined. So based on discussions between Novell Energy and the city staff, we would be signing up, if we did go with Novell, an eight-year contract. And we would be, have a two, after the eighth year, a two-year replacement period. At that time, the city would be able to decide if they want to continue with up to twenty-five years or work with the company to find a replacement. So right now, the city of mayor, we did, for both companies, we did look at the usage, our annual usage. We did supply that information from Excel Energy. I think it was based on the previous two-year average. So we, then, there's a handout as well, the hundred, for Novell, it's, we did a hundred percent usage, which was, we estimated about six hundred kilowatt hours. But then if you, for Renesola, we, they looked at a hundred and twenty, and so Novell wanted to provide what a hundred and twenty percent would be as well. So that brought it up to about a hundred, I mean, a million, seven hundred eighty, eighty-five thousand kilowatt hours for the, per year. Novell Energy is a Minnesota company, it's located in Minnesota. And then Renesola is, also provided a program to us. They offer a flat rate savings program. Again, there is a, they have their presentation in the packet as well. And they were offering a flat rate savings program and a guaranteed savings program. The Solar Garden is located in Play-Doh, Minnesota. They would be offering a five, a one point five cent discount with a twenty-five year contract. The city, with the twenty-five year contract, the city would be able to get out of it if desired at some point, but would have to, would work with the company to find a new subscriber or pay a cancellation fee if we just wanted to get out. Again, the, with, with this program, the rate, the bill credit rates are like, are not predetermined, they're, how is it, they're worked out year to year. They, how do you explain that? Do one of you know what I'm explaining? I, yeah, it's not guaranteed, it's, it's like a, it's determined year to year. So it doesn't have that, like a guaranteed schedule. But I do have, both of you are here today, if you have, if I'm explaining this incorrectly, and if the council has more questions. Again, we did an annual usage analysis with Renesola as well. And with, depending on which program we went with, for Novell, we were predict, if we went with a hundred and twenty percent for both, for either company, there is, I think, on that schedule, it's about seven thousand with Novell. And then depending on if you went with a flat rate or a guaranteed savings program, one of them would be about thirteen thousand four hundred per year, or flat rate would be more of an incremental increase over time. So I know at the previous meeting, you wanted me to kind of provide a summary of both programs, the differences. Really, it's, the difference is, yes, both programs do provide a cost savings to the city. The, the, the one main difference would be the contract length. One would be the eight-year with the two-year ability to kind of reassess, like, is this something we want to stick with or get out of? One would be twenty-five year contract. The other difference is, we have with Novell, that the twenty-five year pre-established bill credit rate return. We do know what we're going to get. There's a little bit, little bit more uncertainty with Renesola with regards to, we just don't know what the rate will be each year. But I just, I just wanted to highlight what the differences were between both programs. At this time, I'm, if you have any questions, please let me know. I, I hope that was somewhat clear. I'm trying to explain it the best I can. I think the packet does provide really good information as well on the differences. We have a representative from both companies here, two, to answer any questions that you have. I guess it's kind of up to the council at this time to decide which one best fits the community, what, what I, what you, it sounds like with communicating with both companies that we would fit with either one of their programs very well. Do you have any clarifying questions right now, any concerns?
Questions, clarification? The terms of contract and the subscription rate is savings, the discounts, the biggest pieces, correct? One is twenty-five year, and that's a penny and a half.
Yes, one is twenty-five year.
Twenty-five year, but an option to be out after ten for a penny.
Yes.
Well, I think we need to actually make a decision finally. We've been talking about this for a long time. Like gardens are getting full with tariffs, and how much it's going to cost to build gardens. I'm not sure how, how much more availability there's going to be. I kind of just want, wanted the pros and the cons between the value of service and the kind of what I'm calling a variable rate, the rate that goes with the rates of the, I just wanted to know the pros and cons.
Well, there's not, I wouldn't, the reason I didn't put pros and cons is there's not really clear pros and cons. It's really, what is it that best fits the community? Like, do you want more like predictability? Do you want to know what you're getting from the, like, from the start? Or, and, and do you want the ability to, to, that flexibility at some point if you want to get out? It, it's just kind of like, whatever one you think fits, fits the community, I guess, better. I, I don't think that, I don't know. I, I, again, I don't think there's like clear pros and cons. I think it's, one is a longer contract, one is shorter. You do have the ability for both to stay twenty-five years. Both do offer the ability to get out of a contract. Both offer savings, the same type of bill credit.
Are we paying a fee for each, if we have to decide to leave the contract with each company? One says you find a, one says you find a customer to take it, or you pay a fee, and the next one is?
I think with Novell, there's not, you, you don't pay to get out of it after the eight years. It's like you have that two-year, and they help you find somebody. But I don't want to misquote you either, because I know you said there was an opportunity to get out, but you, we would help. Were we, we'd be responsible for finding somebody, or?
But we don't.
But there is also a cost if we.
Be up how much?
Basically, what it's structured as is it's like a garden pole, so that one exiting subscriber doesn't impact the others. So basically, if you can wait a year, two years, it's going to be pretty easy to find a subscriber, fill your spot. fill your spot, and transfer free. If you want it out immediately for some reason, you pay a fee just to garden the hole, so it's a calculation based on the years you have left. Um, the nice thing there is that when it sort of comes back to our, and our partners' duty to fill in that space, once we do, we spend a year or more doing that. Once we do, we pro-raise you back the remaining remaining fee you gave us. So, you only really pay for any gap time that you created by exiting. So, there is the, and I don't wanna clog that, but there's a lot of easy ways to get out. And it's intentionally structured right now as sort of, we are gonna do Value Solar Gardens, we are gonna offer very similar structure, very similar structure. We are just filling up this last applicable regional rate garden in a way that gives folks the opportunity to capture the higher savings because in the future, you're gonna want more flexibility in case something like ARR ever comes back.
So, you don't know what, you can't tell us what the fee would be?
It's a calculation, so, um, it took, I mean, you have to give me the year left. I'd have to go in and figure out what was XL's...
How about an estimate?
Um, typically, it would be, it would start in year one at something on the order of what your flat rate savings is, so it's rather large. About halfway through, a good rule of thumb is to say that you save as much as you would pay to exit. And then, the last few years, it's a hundred percent. So, it is a sort of large amount that trickles down over time.
Yeah, I think, I think most programs are good. I mean, I think you should make the decision to get, get into a solar garden. I think the difference really is, is, you know, we had a lot of the ARR gardens as well, they're all sold out. The value of solar programs is different in that your rate, your bill credit rate is guaranteed. It's, it's set for twenty-five years. You're always gonna be one cent below that rate. In an ARR program, you're at the whim of the PUC and XL as to what their rates are gonna do year to year. Now, now, to be perfectly honest, they have gone up at an average of three point three percent in the last fifteen years. Last year, it went down from last year to this year. So, there's a lot of pressure from XL to keep lowering that rate because really, that bill credit rate is what they're paying for electricity, for the solar energy. So, they wanna keep driving that rate down. And if it drives it down too far, you would end up paying more for your electricity than what you'd be saving. Whereas, in a valuable solar program, it's set for twenty-five years.
So, what's your fee entail if we decide to get out? What does that look like?
Now, then, after eight years plus, if two years or less, we find a replacement, subscriber at, at day one of year nine, then it's, you're off, there's no fee. So, it's really an eight-year growing rate. And then, if, if it was year twelve and you wanted to get out for some reason, well, then, we would ask for another two-year replacement period. It would keep going, if you don't say anything, it just keeps going to twenty-five years.
So, are we saying that the ARR programs are going by the wayside? And everybody's going with BOSS, yours?
Well, there was a change in the regulations. There's no longer ARR available. ARR programs were up to five megawatts of solar gardens. POS program, they've limited them to one megawatt. And then, they also came forward to set the rate structure. So, there was no variability. People knew what the bill credit was gonna be for each year for twenty-five years. So, they, they simplified the program.
And a cent is the most that Novell will do?
Yes.
And I do add, so, ARR is something very interesting. Twenty percent of the city's usage is under small general service. So, it's a very clear, um, in, important factor to take into consideration. Your one and a half cent discount is on the general rate structure. So, for eighty percent of your usage, if you took the guaranteed savings approach, because we do have two options, a guaranteed approach and a non- guaranteed. And the rate is, it tied to XL rate. So, yes, push way to the year, slowly goes up. Um, you could do a flat rate option, and then, that would be the risk of if XL rates went to zero, there would be an inversion. So, if that's a concern, stick with the guaranteed savings structure and compare those two. Um, but one nice thing to note is that for that twenty percent of the city's usage that is in small general service, um, your credit discount actually would be something on the order of three and a half cents. So, it's a huge sort of benefit for general service and residential customers to be on the ARR structure. And you'd be able to share that, um, as part of that structure as well.
Can I add one thing? If you want to. No, they'll wait.
Oh, sorry.
If you see in the, the fine print down there, it says a proponent is giving two point six percent annual XL rate increase. Their program is guaranteed, assuming this two point six percent increase each year.
That's not accurate.
That's what you're, on the performance show.
A performance show is...
I don't wanna, I don't wanna get into all the presentations. You got the book, man, and you presented. I mean, if you have specific questions, I appreciate answering, but I'm, we're not gonna get into a whole presentation again. The one question I do have, though, I thought when you were out to present, it was pretty clear that it's a twenty-five year, there wasn't an option for getting out of it at that time.
Uh, sorry, if you may, let's dive into that.
Unless they found somebody to replace that.
Okay. Unless we, okay. Thank you.
And I, I just wanted to say, like, it, it's not just for y, one program. It's the, the one concern that staff had with, um, was the ability over time to be able to find somebody, like, would, you know, as technology changes, would it be more difficult over time to find a replacement? And that was just one concern that, um, that staff had continuously brought up. So, just having that strong language in a contract that would allow us to, to have that ability to, to get out, if we needed to, I don't, I'm not saying, we, we just don't know what the future will, will have. So, um, we're bringing up...
Any other questions? Any one want to make a motion?
Is there, I mean, are there, like, things that you see as, like, preferable, like, what you're looking for? I think in the beginning, what I was getting was out of the council or what I felt from the council is, is, um, 'cause I know we've had, or you've had, several companies over the last five years approached the city with programs. And I think there was this need and, and I, for more certainty in what you were getting back. And that's why I felt that the, um, like, I, I know you guys have looked at flat rate before, where you incrementally, incrementally save over time, and I know you've gone against that. I'm not saying that it isn't right now, but I think the, um, guaranteed savings model or the, um, what is the actual term? Yeah, where you, where you know, like, the, where you get the savings, one cent or one point five cent. That's kind of what I felt you guys were going for before, um, just to, to have that no risk, that more certainty in model. I don't know if that's still where you're at, um, but I...
I like the thought that, that I, I want the city locked in for twenty-five years, so I, I want the flexibility for the residents, and I think it's important.
Are, are you talking about the eight-year plan, though?
Yep.
Okay.
Yep.
That's what you mean, that, right?
Like I said a little bit when they were out presenting, is, we don't know what's gonna happen in fifteen years or how much more solar there will be or won't be, and, or will it be better programs? You know, if we're locked in for twenty-five years and there's, all of a sudden, word now, we could be saving a flat rate of four cents a, you know, we could get out of the one and join a new one after ten. There's just so many uncertain, unknowns at this point. So, I like that flexibility to be able to get out in eight years in one day. If they found someone or ten years at the, at the longest, if we chose, and if it's great and we still wanna stay in it, we still have fifteen more years, we can do it. But I prefer the flexibility versus gambling on some of the savings that we could or could not, depending on rates and what happens. So, I think the flexibility is best for our, our residents, for the city and future councils, and not locking them in.
And for all the above reasons, I will make a motion to enter a solar garden subscription agreement with Novell.
And is that what the current, uh, contract that's been reviewed by the attorney and reaching?
Yes.
All right, we have a motion, do we have a second? We have a motion, a second, any further discussion? Any further discussion? All right, we have a motion, a second, all in favor, say aye. Aye, opposed?
No.
Motion carries four one. Boarder is in a. All right, thank you, thank you both for coming in, I appreciate it. Take it to six B one lights, City Hall Park. All right, this is the boarder, that is officially installed, installed in the city hall, seven point four megawatt, AME Electric, which costs three thousand four hundred and forty dollars. Public Works staff will order the footing for the four, and they can track the amount of three hundred dollars, three hundred dollars, probably three thousand seven hundred ninety dollars. Public Works staff can install the parking lot at the same time, and follow that to their standard. Uh, as the books are received from AME Electric, and also AME Water, and so, we're going to be located right about this area, and it's like this section.
Yay. In the graph there?
Yeah, just up, just up, blacked out a little bit, maybe about ten feet or so.
So no worries on plowing yet?
No.
So, you started talking about this in April of two thousand and eighteen, so you said it will be installed when the light side skating rink will be installed, so when will that be?
It'll be through other priorities and parts right now, for our city, so it'll probably be in July, maybe around.
Can I just... So are we, are they planning on doing something with the surface of the ice skating rink? I'm not trying to get too far off topic, but I don't want to put lights up if we can't flood that rink, and it all flows or whatever happened last year.
Well, uh, last year, we, we worked the, worked the ground, and then it rained and it rose, so we had mud boils coming up, because the ground was so saturated, there was a ton of intact, you know, and that was a big concern, and that whole park was at, at the scene, and that work had tried, but there was no guarantee. And yeah, we flooded it, flooded it, and then we got three big mud boils, and all the ice was like, so now that it's been compacted, they'll have summer time to, you know, dry out, essentially, now we got to align it as well. And it'll be a direct service, so have I should take very... Have lights for skating rink been approved already? Yes. I think we're a lot small.
Excellent, Joe.
We have work to do tomorrow.
Right, I just didn't want to, I mean, why put lights up if the ground is not suitable to even have an ice skating rink?
Yeah.
That's what I thought happened last year.
This is a current condition of it, that that time they were doing, so it's nice, we kind of thought that, but we're going to try.
Okay.
But this is a different.
And the weather wasn't very cooperative.
Weather was very good, yes. Some of yours here for public works, support the footings, dig the trench. Yeah, same thing we're doing for the ice skating rink, that's why it'll be easy to do work on that. Are you renting equipment? Equipment there. Okay. And then which obviously brings their quote down. Correct. Get significant savings from that. And you have the staff, you have the man with, um, to do that. And we think end of July. July, October. If you'd like us to move out. And I think, I mean, I think it brings up, uh, off top, okay, but, okay. Any other questions on, on the parking lot lights?
I don't give a dog a, that light isn't for you to set at like, winter, winter time, maybe it does here, and it's not light at nine thirty, let's get it straight now.
As long as it's supposed to be before fall.
Well, I'll make a motion to pay the, um, to give the, the AME one, the three thousand four hundred and forty dollars to AME, um, for the installation of the City Hall parking lot light.
Perfect. Do we have a motion? Do we have a second?
Three thousand four what?
Three thousand four hundred and forty. Cause they have, um, they can minus what they're going to be doing, digging footings, crap all the time.
And then if new phases come in, we'll get ahead of that type of stuff will get put in at in creek and yeah.
And there's not going to be the restoration issue.
Right, right, yeah. Get everything the right way and the right time when everything else is going in and yeah. Good.
And the roof, you know, uh, this time of, uh, it's going to be better. So, it's more than.
Right, right, yeah, like I tell you, the customer service has been great to a lot of issues. They can dial right in, they can tell you exactly where the problem is without coming out and tell you if you're on the five G and switch off and go to the other ones because you're well, it's awesome, so.
Oh, I can't wait.
It's been great, but.
Yeah, like I said, my, my only feedback would be the communication to the residents. I guess was a little runny.
I don't know from that, I believe it's very difficult. Yeah. It's hard to communicate to people that are active, pending and potential residents.
I'm hearing dripping of everybody's yard even if they're not going to have service, right? You're trying to pour through. I just have one suggestion, um, when you, when you have someone call to schedule the install, can you, because I know you use a contractor for the person who does the install, can you please leave the homeowner like the very basic, first of all, this is our number, this is our twenty four hour number, this is our number, and this is how you can work your phone.
Oh, yeah.
Because I'm sitting, I'm like, oh, I have a voicemail, I'm like, oh, so how goes?
I'm not sure we got, but we have install, yes, I could do that.
No, I did not get one, so. That would have been really nice, I had to call and find out how to get voicemail, so. I didn't know how to do that.
We can find out who was that. You have, you have the problem solved?
Well, yeah, because I went online and I called the number and then I called the person and, I mean, I didn't even have my account number, I'm like, oh, so that's why I get into it, it's like volunteer account number, I'm like, I don't know what that is, so. So then I called and everything got taken care of, like, you know, the customer service on the phone was fabulous, so.
All right, so, anything else for Jaguar? Yeah, thank you for coming out.
Glad you were here. You did, thank you.
Perfect, yeah, thanks for coming out, appreciate it.
Fantastic ability for a town, for sure.
All right, Megan, I'll take us to three.
Okay, so, I, I wanted to bring this back because I just wanted to get a final, like, um, kind of guidance on it. Um, so this is a payment service network, the utility software we had talked about previously. Um, so I, I believe this was at a previous workshop and, um, you had asked staff to provide kind of a timeline as to how this transition would work if we did go with a new utility software. Um, so, just to provide a little, um, review, it's just a software program that would integrate into our current, um, software, which is Banyan Data Systems. We'd be able to transfer files between both. Um, right now, we have to manually print everything and then put it in, um, which is not ideal. Um, we thought when we were going with this new company that this, this would be resolved and it, and it didn't get resolved. So, that would be a benefit. Also, um, residents would be able to see their bills online, they'd be able to track their payment history, their usage, usage history. Um, they just have a lot of more data at their fingertips on, on their utilities. Um, we do get quite a few questions. Um, I, I've, I've answered phone calls, um, about usage, um, people, I don't know if Janelle does, but I, I know I get.
I tracked it after that work session, I tracked the calls when I got it, and there wasn't that many.
Oh.
So.
Well, I, I know I've gotten phone calls about just what, I mean, even what they owe currently, like, phone calls about what they owe because they've lost their bill or what their bill history is. Um, um, but, um, I think some people would, would prefer to have that knowledge at their fingertips. I know it would also allow us the ability to do credit card payments, um, as well. And I know right now we only accept cash and check, um, so, unless you pay online through the website, you can pay through credit or, um, debit. Um, one thing we would have to figure out eventually is, um, I know it depends on the city, how they want to structure it, but some cities do cover that, um, that processing fee, some cities cover part of it, and some cities don't cover it at all. Right now, we do not cover, um, the processing fee for credit cards, um, and so the residents do, um, do have to pay a processing fee right now. Um, so that is something we would have, if we did transition, we would have to maybe just review that. Um, but I did provide kind of a, we do have to, um.
We don't, does the city get charged for the ACH payments?
We do.
Yeah, a lot of change, don't they?
Yeah, a little bit.
Oh, it's a small fee, like twenty dollars, twenty dollars, like this last month was like twenty one.
Oh, okay, so we just, we're just eating that.
But that's direct deposit, you know, like for people who are on automatic control.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah, yep, yep.
Okay.
Um, but I, I would say like, just, um, in the time that, you know, whenever Janelle's out and I help, like, I'll help with utility billing a little bit, um, a lot of people pay with checks still.
A lot of people, a lot of people.
People pay with checks. Um, so.
That's because they don't want to pay the fee.
Right, exactly.
Right, it's, they don't want to pay the fee or, um.
But if I write a check for my property taxes, because they don't want to pay this fee when I pay online.
Right, so, I mean, if we can, and, and even when we do have credit card payments, we, Janelle has to enter those in manually, um, you have to print them, I mean, it just, it would be nice to be able to just push a button and, and pull the payments in, into our software.
A lot of places that I pay almost all my bills online, actually all of them, and if you, they must be eating the fees for, direct to the bank.
Right.
If I use a check card or a credit card, I have to pay the fee.
Yeah, and you can kind of.
So, I think that's what most people are doing a half and half, like, is one of the examples that you have in here.
Yep, yep. Um, so I, I just think, um, I mean, just comparing what we currently have, um, with, with this program, I, which I've used in two other cities, um, I think there are benefits, um, just staff time and more options and more information for residents. Um, we, if we did transition, we would have to do a thirty day notification to GovPayNet to, to cancel that contract, but I think that would be fine in the sense that then we'd be able to educate residents, um, on the, the change, um, just saying, just letting them know, um, like putting in the newsletter, like a little pamphlet, which, um, payment services would help draft that for us, um, just educating them on, on what new, uh, information would be available for them, how they, what new payment options would be available, and then, uh, how, you know, if we did share the cost or, um, erase that processing cost, then we could kind of try and incentivize, um, I guess, as well, um, that shift, but, so I just put together kind of a transition process, like, if we were to move, move ahead with this, um, starting, uh, and getting this on the next council agenda for approval, but.
I think it's a good plan, I mean, some of the payment stuff for me, I'll have to do what, what's our savings, you know, I don't mind if this will save, it's three hours a week, or three hours a month of time when we take that, put it towards payment, I'm aligned with that, I mean, I'm transferring that to, you know, to something else, but I need to know what some of that is.
Okay.
What are the advantages to the city here for, for going to this, and then I don't mind giving that kickback to the residents and doing a share or if we pay all, you know, however it works out, but.
Yeah.
There's some advantages to it, and I forget, bills paid on time, and there's less we have to do with letters and, and then get them onto the, bring the council and getting things onto their tax at the end of the year, I mean, whatever may help us, but I just need to know some of tho- those advantages.
Okay.
And what those savings are for me.
Yeah, no, I think that makes sense, um, yeah, I can put together a list of kind of what, what the advantages are again, I, I, I know from just.
And money associated with, I mean, I know what some of the advantages are, but what are the dollar amounts that, that are, that come with that? It'll help me determine what we, we want to help subsidize our pay.
That, that what I'll save by you not, could be the amount of what, if we absorb the.
Yeah, there's a lot of different.
Would people, if they already have automatic jobs, have to change, or is it that?
No, we would, we would keep the, the ACH through the bank, so they wouldn't have to do that, but they, but I know this program you'd be able to set up, like, ongoing, like right now you can't set up ongoing, like, getting it, like, automatic payments, like on a credit card or on a, um, three year check card or anything, you can't do that, you have to make a one-time payment right now, um, whereas I know you'd be able to do like a schedule through that program as well if you want to do it that way. Just good job. I just, I know when, when, when I did utility billing for another community and we transitioned over, like, the, we saw quite a bit of people transitioning away from checks and using this program.
Well, that's how we might say what, to word out there and, and what we do. Um, we have a good plan for that. All right, anything, anything more on that? Signing bonus.
Okay, so, um, at the last meeting we approved the tower amendment, um, which extended our lease with, um, Tower Alliance. Um, so with that, we did get a forty thousand dollar signing bonus, um, and then two thousand extra for our attorney fees. So, I know, um, we wanted to bring this to a workshop to kind of discuss what, where we would put that money, um, I, I feel that it would be, um, beneficial to actually put it towards something and let the residents know, like, we have these, we have these projects, um, in the city, like, this is what we use the money for instead of just putting it in the bank, or, I mean, we could save it, but, um, just to say, hey, we got this money, these are the projects we did with it. Um, so I just, I, I didn't want to, like, make the decision for you, but I wanted to offer a couple of options, that, you know, some projects that the city, um, uh, staff identified, um, as a need, and I know one of them is audio visual here in the community center, um, or in the city council chambers. I did get a quote, two quotes last year, and I got it, one updated. We were going to try and, just because it came back quite a bit and we hadn't budgeted for it, um, we were going to try and do it in-house, but we just don't have the expertise to actually do it in-house. We were able to do the, like, the, like, high up, public works from those guys were able to do the, the.
I, I agree, I, I mean, and especially if Jaguar is going to be giving us a public access channel for your charts, I mean, you've got to make sure that things look in some ways that you actually want to be watching.
Right, yeah.
Yeah, um, and so.
At the point we upgrade or we pull the plug on the whole time, we do it or we're not, because there's no point in having these uploaded to YouTube and no one can hear you.
Well, and plus, you know, I, I was looking at the packet and looking at the, uh, quote from tyranny, and I noticed that it says that they've written camera, camera controller recorder will be reused, but if you look at the YouTube videos, the, the quality of the picture is not good.
Okay.
Right.
It's not good at all, so, and again, if we're going to have this on public access, let's have the, the sound and picture quality be good.
Yeah.
So that way, somebody, you know, doesn't look at it kind of, is my eyes, or is that what it looks like?
I agree.
Yeah, like, if we're going to do it, we want it right, we need to do it right and not, just use a stunt like that.
Keep it together.
Yeah. I mean, because not everybody can come, you know, to the city, I think, I mean, there are people, I think, do watch the YouTube videos. It'd be helpful, like, if I missed a meeting, I could watch and actually hear what everybody was saying. Well, and there's a lot of people that do want to come but can't because of child series and things like that, or, you know, it's nice to just turn on the TV and have it going on in the background while you're cooking dinner, and things like that, I mean, that's where I used to live, I mean, they showed it live that day as it was going on, but then they would also show it again like Saturday morning, so if you didn't, weren't home, you could actually watch it again, and it was really helpful, and we really did get a lot more community engagement that way.
I would also watch, um, board meetings.
Yeah, I totally would too. I think they get the board meetings down there too.
I think using that forty grand four thing is the way to, I, I think we should use it, and especially if there's, you know, maybe two good options for it, and, you know, if everyone's in agreement, the audio visual we got to look at, we budgeted some, we used some, but for something like the roof that we haven't budgeted for now, we need it done, and we don't have to budget for our twenty twenty, that's savings right there for the community, that's less than we're going to tax, but I think that's a great way to use that money.
Right, and I know.
For something we haven't budgeted for yet.
Yeah, and I know Kyle, we've talked about it, I mean, we've replaced tiles and we've seen spots already and we're like, oh my gosh, um, and.
It's going to save money in the long run, especially if damage is being done.
Right, and we have been, they have been doing some efforts to kind of alleviate some of the problem, but it's a fifteen year old roof, it needs some maintenance and updating, so, um, and I did provide some information about what it cost fifteen years ago, um, so I do think, you know, both of these projects, um, would, would be worthwhile.
That's appropriate, that's appropriate to me.
So, I think what we can do is maybe finalize the numbers and then, um, maybe get this, um, to the, a regular council session and for approval, okay.
And when you say get the numbers, are you talking for both audio visual and for the residential roof?
Yes, yep.
When does the, uh, when do we get the bonus?
Um, the contractor sign and sent over to them, I don't know, I can, um, send an email, uh, over to them and just see, but I, I would think as soon as they sign that they would send it over.
I would think so too, we just signed it last Tuesday.
Yeah.
Uh, we had to wait for Janelle to back in town for our notary sort, that was last Tuesday.
One notary in town, job security.
Well, we, and there were banks that went to, we chose, we chose to wait, we needed, we needed witnesses, and it was easier, yeah, and we wanted to hear about our trip.
Yeah.
Uh, gambling license, waiving gambling license.
Okay, so I think there were just some questions, um, we, from time to time approve these gambling licenses, um, just like for, um, we've been recently doing them for the Lions Club, um, so, what these are is a nonprofit can come in and they can, I think, get up to five year, five of them per year for, um, for just events, um, that they want to put on. Um, so, usually we do, when we do these applications, staff always recommends no waiting period, or the application is acknowledged with no waiting period, which, let me bring that warm up. Um, I just, and I think you guys were just wondering what that means, um, like, why are we waiving that? Sometimes they come to us without the thirty, or before the thirty days, so we have to kind of just push it through, but, um, state statute, um, for, it's just kind of a control thing, um, a regulation, um, just requires cities to have that thirty day wait period for gambling licensing, and, um, but it looks like the city does have the authority to waive it if they want to. So I did kind of call the county and I just said, what's the difference, why is this, why are there even two options? They couldn't really give me a clear answer.
The county or the state?
Huh? Oh, I mean, the state, I'm sorry, the state. I called the state.
The board?
The board, um, and they just said, you know, it's just the state law, they don't, they don't, most cities every time just do the no waiting period, um, it's just kind of one of those details that, um, yes, the state does have that, that thirty day period per statute, um, but the city can waive it, and most cities do, so, um, I, I would say it's not, I, I don't think we're doing anything wrong, like, I think it's the way we're doing it wrong, um, but, yeah, if they do get it in, you know, there is no reason that we can't put the thirty day.
So if we didn't waive it, it wouldn't even have to come to council, correct?
No, it still does, it always does.
It has to come here no matter what.
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Yeah, but you have to get low cost.
They'd have to wait the thirty days, and they wouldn't, because they're coming in so late, they wouldn't get their license in time.
Yeah.
Because it also then takes the gambling, it also takes the gambling control board another two to six weeks or whatever they say.
Yeah.
Um, to, for them to get their thing.
Yeah, and I mean.
It's just a protection thing, I think that's what it is.
Yeah.
It protects the city from, uh, maybe someone comes in and, I don't know what, isn't, isn't doing it legally, doesn't have the right, um, credentials or whatever, it protects us to go back and say, hey, we don't.
Yeah, and it's just like, um, an extra control measure, like, this, like, the state grants the, this authority to the local government to get.
Right, it gives us the thirty days to check that organization out, to make sure that that, so I don't even know if we're responsible.
And they do, if they, if they don't, if they do submit an application under thirty days, they do have to do an expedited, expedited application where they have to pay more to the state.
I'm sure they do.
To get it.
But not us.
Maybe we should implement that, because we, that we get a fee if it's lasted thirty days. I mean, there's stuff that we have to do, we have, you know.
We are probably regulated by the state that we can't do that.
And if it's a fifty dollar on our piece, that's what pays for some of the things that we may have to rush it through, and we have to scramble to get it on a, on a general, or, it's always my understanding with that thirty, so who, who waits for thirty days? Do we hold it for thirty and then, or does the state hold it for thirty and then they have to rush?
Yeah, they hold it.
My understanding, and I don't know where I heard this or read it, that it was to give people an opportunity to dispute it or put in their grievance or, or their, persuade why they think it shouldn't happen or why it shouldn't be, and gave people opportunity for that, was my understanding.
How would you even know that's being applied for a license?
And I, and I guess, I guess.
You go to meetings and you know this.
Before you, before you.
Because they have the resolu-, like, we have to give the resolution before they can get the license. It's just a protection.
Well, that helps, I mean, it's that, I brought it up at the last, I, I was just, I, I was just confused by that, and why we're doing, I understood this last one, it was within thirty days, so I got it, but the, the other one that we did, it was six weeks out, eight weeks out, and we waived the thirty days, it just didn't seem right to waive the thirty days if they have plenty of time, but.
Yeah.
I didn't realize that the state will shut on it then, and they could be anywhere, you know, first in, first out, it could be for weeks before they do it, but.
I mean, I belong to an organization, we do a raffle, and it's, you know, we like to get it in right away, get it approved, because then we know that we're going to be approved, we can, uh, sell raffle tickets for a longer period of time, you know, they're trying to work with vendors to get, you know, stuff to, you know, that's why it's, that's why we always ask to have it.
It's a different kind of raffle.
Yeah, and we, we really don't, we only do a couple a year.
Yeah, we don't do too many.
Well, with.
Or we have, we can count on them doing it all, all five.
Now with the Lions, I think we're going to see more than what we saw with just DU who did it once a year.
Yeah.
But, and, and maybe in the future, I, we look at if it's expedited, maybe we add to our fee schedule a twenty dollar.
I would look into that and see if we can even do that.
I mean, we're, we're doing nonprofit organizations, we're trying to do some good on a nonprofit, we're.
We're planning ahead too and making sure we're not first running through, but, again, if it's not a cost for the staff.
Maybe as.
I wouldn't want to do it just to make money.
No, right.
Maybe as they get going, they'll get their, like, their set events, it's, it sounds like what they are doing is, you know, certain set events, um, that are in conjunction with maybe other events going on, so those are the same time every year, and maybe they'll be like, okay, I mean.
Yeah.
Yes, you want to watch this year, and they're like, okay.
I think they originally thought they could only do, like, two, and then we told them they could do five, so I think they.
Yeah, they changed that, I thought they could only do two, too, and they changed it, they made it very easy for people who aren't licensed but nonprofit to, to gamble.
All right, well, thank you, that helps for me. Anything else, you have a question, okay, let's go to children at play signs.
Okay, so, um, I just put this on there at the last minute because, um, we've, over time, I've gotten requests for stop signs or, um, children at play signs, um, recently, the most recent one was Friday, it was the children at play sign, and, um, just a resident concerned about speeding or, um, usually it's, well, it, it usually centers around speeding or just cars not, um, following traffic signs, um, and so they want to put up extra signs. Um, we, I, I looked, we do not have a policy on these types of signs, so I don't really, I usually tell residents, um, that, I, I don't really have an answer for residents.
I do.
Um, because we don't have a policy, what I, what I do is say.
Well, the answer is that it's, we have a federal document called the manual engine form traffic control devices, and they do not suggest that we put up children at play signs.
Right, right.
That's why we need to tell them.
Well, that's what I, I've explained, I've said, you know, it's a false sense of security, it's not going to change, you know, people's behavior, like, we can try and educate them, uh, you know.
I mean, if they want to go to Walmart and buy those little kids, before they need to look up those signs, if they want to do that, fine, I don't care, but if they have the city put up something, no.
Right.
I think, uh, one of the biggest. You have to have it like every hall.
We have, we have, well, and I, and I.
Every hall is packed and.
And I completely agree with that, but I, I think if you feel there's a need to document this and kind of have a policy, I, I'm not opposed to putting something down, a couple paragraphs into.
I just, I think a policy.
But I don't, that's even needed, I don't.
I, yeah, I would say it's not needed and this is not a city issue.
I think it's a.
This is a sheriff's.
Right, it's a forceful issue again.
Yeah.
And if they're calling, you're saying we need a stop sign, great, mark it down, let the county police know, hey, you got to get out there because people are speeding, you know, people don't want to. Well, they can go normally fast in, in neighborhoods for some reason, but if they're going through stop signs, well, yeah, have them, have them roll down the sheriff, yep. If I can say a number and call the sheriff, it's kind of not loud.
I think that's, I think that's the issue.
I know, we talked earlier, I mean, if, if there's not a real good response to say to them, everyone has the opportunity to come to council and request one, and they can come to a meeting and request one, and we hear them out and.
Right, and I think I was.
Everyone has the, everyone has the opportunity to come to council for anything.
Yeah, and I'm trying to avoid, like, too much of that, um, and so I thought a policy would be helpful to say, hey.
But that's what we're here for, at least, that's what.
But we don't need a policy for this.
Okay.
To me, a policy for this is not even appropriate because we have federal mandates, we have sheriffs, what do we need a policy for? That we can't put up a sign because the federal government says that it's not recommended.
Well, we could just say that we could, like, the city's policy on, on these recommendations are that we, we follow, look at that report.
We're going to have to do that for every, we're going to have to do that every night for each statute.
That's not still up, by the way, they're going.
Is that true, are they gone? We should take it down. In that call to town?
I think the only advantage.
Call a judge, death trial, oh.
I think the policy may be to keep things consistent, you know, if six years from now it's a whole different council and someone comes in wanting a sign and says, oh, yeah, I think you should, and then the next council, no, I don't, I mean, maybe for that reason it seems to make sense to me, but I'm opposed to putting them in, to be perfectly honest.
Right, and I think when people ask me why, I mean, it's, it's tough to not have a document that says, well, we have a policy that says that we, we don't support these, um, because.
The government says that we don't support these.
Well, I, I, and I have explained that, I did explain that studies have shown that these, putting these signs up don't work, it's a false sense of security, you need to watch your children, you know, it's, I, I don't see it, say it in a mean way, I just say it's.
No, you need to watch your kids.
Uh, I, and I have explained that, but it's like, when they say things like, I'm going to get the whole neighborhood to sign a petition, and, um, I just, it's, in those cases, I don't know what to say, because we don't have a policy that says, it's, it's our policy, like.
This is our, our political process, that should happen.
Right.
We should do it. Let them do it and come to city council and you can either discuss it or we can point out what the law states says or what the power of the nation is. But they might get signs that say, please do not let your children play in the alley, in the, in the roadway, because people let their kids play in the alley.
Well, that's the thing, they, they want, they want their kids to be able to play in the street safely, and I don't think that's realistic, and.
Well, they can't play in the street.
Well, they can't play in the street. That's the problem right there.
So, there's a real concern on, you know, I've got to get, I was wanting to get to a root cause of this and if it's to put up a sign because people are driving too fast, then again, that's the sheriff. Then again, let me go hang our speed sign out there that we purchased last night over and put that up.
And I, right, and I, and again, and I did talk to them about the sheriff and they, she did acknowledge that, she did see the sheriff out there, um, and she was appreciative of that. I just, just wanted to get some guidance, um, because it has come up a few times and I, I just, I, I have explained that, you know, staff's point of view, like how we, how we assess it, how we don't feel that it's gonna help the situation, but then it's, when they take it a step further saying, well, I want you to do it anyway, it's just like, well, and we say, no, it's like, well, do I then bring them to the cell for, you know, to make, you guys decide, or do I, you know, what do I do?
Well, we live in a time and a culture where everybody wants the government to control everything and won't really have personal accountability, and yet, the role of the government does not control regulations or manning employees, you've got personal responsibility and the government can't deal with regulations. People in the city are always gonna go to the district, I want you to do that, I want you to do that. It's not the government or the state's fault, it's you who matters.
Well, we do have a town call, we do have a town call.
Thank you.
Tell them we got our- Or tell them I will be happy to inform the deputy.
You know, if you got some students in the neighborhood, you got license plate number, call them one. Or the non-emergency, because if it's a league that can't serve them. So, and say, hey, this student was subsequently speeding, almost hurt a bunch of kids, remember, let the sheriff handle that.
Yeah, and I completely agree with that, I'm totally opposed to a sign as far as a policy, I don't care if you write it or not.
Yeah, I'm fine with that.
One time or a three year thing that we're gonna put a lot of effort into a policy for one time, you know, if it was every week you're seeing this, I'd be more appalled for a policy in place, but-
Well, then keep pushing, then encourage them to come to council, I can put you on the agenda if you like. And, because in the end, you can't make the decision no matter what. Someone would have to make the decision, so.
And I believe that people should be doing, I think that's their right to know how, how, they should be coming to council if they want things like that.
And, but I would agree, let's have that, you know, that speed sign and let's put it in some of those areas that are getting delayed.
It'll be obvious.
But aren't they allowed to go thirty miles an hour in the, in the, uh-
Yeah, that's what my next question, it's gonna be thirty, I believe, on all our buildings and I don't know if you-
But the R is twenty-five.
Yeah, and that's been, that's been sort of, I don't know. And I, I don't know if this specific one, they live on the corner of Hidden Trail and Knights. So I think they're saying if you go down Knights are going, down that, are going sixty.
Isn't Minnesota, not in the neighborhood?
Unmarked residential roads are thirty, correct? Unless marked, unless marked. Because I remember when I lived in North Red, North Dakota is twenty-five, that's so bad.
Thirty's fast.
Mhm, thirty is fast, I don't drive through a neighborhood any faster than twenty. No, I mean, in our neighborhood, we have a speedo inside right coming into our neighborhood, it's twenty-five, right.
Who erected, the city erect that sign?
I don't, you know it to be honest, no.
All right, anything else on that, Maggie, you got what you needed there?
Yes.
Let me let you-
It's all good.
Do it, turn.